6:59, I'm gonna turn it on.
I'm good there, we can go ahead with it. Oh, you're trying to heat up.
I did turn it up, but...
Did you?
It's still not there.
How's that work?
So you saw this downstairs one bit? And now it's not in here.
So you're welcome, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got exactly 7:00 PM, that's the time that we start these meetings. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here and thank you for coming. This meeting is open to the public. What we're gonna deal with is, we're gonna deal with one item today, and that item is going to be with signs associated with the building. Now, the agenda that I will go through is we'll do a tenant's roll call. I think I can see that everybody's here, but I'll let you know. I'll give you the rough agenda. We'll do a pledge of allegiance, we will stand up, and I will lead us through that. Then we will review the minutes from a previous meeting. Then we'll take a look at the agenda, which really is just this item, but it's kind of got a lot of details on it. We will review our previous meeting minutes. And I've got some questions here that I will ask on this particular item on the agenda. Anybody have any questions about that? No questions, let us stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, so what we've got here, we did a pledge of allegiance, minutes from the last meeting. You've had an opportunity to review them, if you haven't, please take so right now. Go over them, see if you'd like to make a motion to approve them as they are written, or if you'd like to add any changes to them.
Can we make a motion for Dave to be...
Well, we don't have to make a motion. What I can tell you is we're doing is we're gonna appoint Dave. Well done here, and thank you for that. One of our regular members is absent tonight, and Dave is a standing alternate appointed by the board from the village. And we're going to have him join us tonight. Thank you very much. Any questions for what you gotta do?
Nope.
Comments or questions on that item? Okay, back to the meeting minutes from October 17.
I would move that we approve them as distributed.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, we'll approve them as written. Any other questions, thoughts?
No.
Seconded, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Well done. All right. I'm gonna read through the agenda. Five West Main Street, owned by Mark Landon, and CO, is that care of?
I think, I don't have that paper in front of me, I'm sorry.
All right, but it says care of Monco.
Monco is, yes. Monco is the tattoo shop that's applying, I own the sign.
Fair enough. Okay, the applicant is applying for an important statement here, and I just want everybody to recognize it. A non-illuminated blade sign on the front southeast corner of the building. Now, what a blade sign is, for those of you who don't understand, is it's a sign that comes out from the building. It'll have a 90-degree angle on both inside corners going to the building as opposed to one that's attached directly to the building. The applicant seeks relief from current zoning regarding the number, the type, and the size of the sign, applicable zoning sections. Requesting a sign in the front of the building when a sign exists in the rear and the building of the building equaling two signs, only one is allowed, and that's in 175, 54D2. No more than one sign for the identification of each business conducted on the premises. Except that if the building is located on one or more intersecting streets, one, excuse me, on two or more intersecting streets, one sign for each facade may be permitted, except as provided in subsection D3, 4, and 5. Such signs shall be attached and parallel to the street facade of the principal building. This may be illuminated and shall have a total area of not greater than 10% of that proportion of the main facade as the floor space of such a business bears to the total floor space of the building, but no greater than a total of 75 feet. Now that's a, I'm gonna stop right there real quickly, and I'm just going to, this says illuminated. That means, what that means, and if anybody's got any questions on this, I will deal with them individually. But what it means is that you may have a light coming off of the building and pointing at the sign. We may not do internally lit signs here, and we've seen them in some places, but we may not do that. All right, requesting the area variance due to the size of the double-sided 2.5, 2.5 feet by 7 feet, that's the size of the sign. 2 feet by 5 feet is allowed in the regulations. Also seeks approval on the type of sign being a projection sign off the front of the building, 175, 54E. Projection signs in the central business district. The owners of businesses not located at intersections of streets and/or driveways may apply to the zoning board of appeals for a projection sign that projects perpendicular to the facade of their building in lieu of the facade sign. I know there's not one point. All right. The minimum clearance height of the sign above finished grade must be eight feet. So in other words, it's gotta be eight feet above the sidewalk. That's your finished grade. The maximum dimensions of the sign, including the frame, are 2 feet by 5 feet. The application that we've received says they would like this to be 2.5 by 7 feet. And we've got a picture of it. The sign may have advertising on both sides, but may not be illuminated internally. The owners of the sign must provide the Village of Webster insurance in accordance with subsection D3B of that section. And here's one I would just throw on there. You will provide that insurance before the sign goes up. To let everybody know that you've got it, so that if anything happens during the installation, it's covered. Okay, that's what's on our list here. So why don't you tell us who you are, where you're from? Are you the owner of the business, or just the sign maker?
Josh Palmer.
And I don't say "just the sign," I didn't mean it to sound like that.
I'm Josh Palmer, I'm a partner at Vital Signs up the road on Ridge Road in Webster. I am here representing Monco. We are proposing this sign. First of all, he's got no real front exposure on Main Street right now. There was a sign space between, what is used to be Good Smoke, The Rock Chicken, and the smoke shop, but that's not his entrance. It would just cause confusion if we put a cabinet there. We've already got people going into those other businesses looking for this business. He wants to finally use that front doors and entrance, and that's why we wanna locate it over there. But frankly, there's not enough square foot left in that building to do anything flat to the building. There's nothing really left on the facade. So we're proposing to get it up. He is on the top floor, so that's why we want it up there, to kind of indicate that it is up. He takes up probably, I don't know what percentage, but almost that whole upper floor. So he has basically the same amount of space as the two downstairs businesses combined. But what he doesn't have is any real exposure, and he's having difficulty, especially with another tattoo shop right across the street. A lot of guys are coming to look for him and seeing that one there and going in there, thinking they're in the right place. So he's, you know, he's fighting a kind of losing battle here. So we played around with a few different concepts, and we really kind of thought that this was the most effective way to kind of represent his business and get him the visibility that he needs. Now, you did indicate that the really allowable is 2 times, 2 by 5.
2 by 5 is allowable.
We are 2 and 1/2 by 7, but much of that space is negative space. It's only because that top bar projects out the two sides of that is really negative space. If we added up the total square foot, I could do a little math here, but it's nowhere near that, you know, if we subtracted that negative space.
Hold on, I did the math. You're at about 9.8 square feet.
So I'm a little under that 10.
So you're under the 10.
Yeah, thank you.
If we don't count...
The negative space, so I do really fall within the, within code then? If we're talking about total allowable square footage.
Right.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's just me, I'm a geek.
2 by 2.
That's 10 square feet.
10 square feet.
But if you calculate...
2.5 times 7 is more than that.
But we're subtracting the negative.
Remember, this is a T, take out the, take out the, it's not a rectangle sign.
Okay, I got it.
If you deduct out all the air, he's like 9.8.
Okay.
Proportionally, you're...
Mathematically, in reality.
I...
Ed, actually though, it says you're allowed a sign that's 5 feet wide, but only 2 feet tall. You're looking for 7 feet tall.
Does it say that 5 wide and 2 tall? That would project out a little too far, in our opinion. We'd be over the road by then, so we thank you.
Okay, I had a question. On your, the photo you provided, is that approximately the size?
I think it actually should appear a little smaller than that. It's hard to render those...
Those windows are certainly...
I think those windows were 6 feet, so we're just a little bit higher than the window. It may be fairly accurate. So I think, I think we measured those windows at 72 inches from brick to brick, from the bottom to the arch, top to the arch.
I have a question for you, was this sign made already?
No.
Okay. I went by the building earlier today. It looked to me, and maybe I saw something else, but I didn't think so. I thought that very sign, or something very close to it, was on the 250 side of the building, or something like it.
There's nothing from Monco on the 250.
Oh, there's not now, I went back and buy it to look, 'cause I wouldn't know why.
Yeah, no, there's, there's nothing that we've done there that I'm aware of. The only thing we know is that, that second-hand store, the Mod For You. And that's a different, there's a Mod For You, which is a totally different company than Monco.
Okay.
Isn't there a tattoo shop on the backside of this building already?
That's the entrance he's using currently, but he's not getting any visibility from that. And he's just got a flat, relatively small sign.
And you have a sign on the backside?
He has one previously, but it's not effective.
I couldn't, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, there is one back there, that's my point.
That's the problem.
Yes, and you were looking for it.
You just made his point. Well, no, I was looking at all the doors, and I was looking above the doors. I could not find a sign for this operation. So I guess the question I was asking out of that is, are we looking for two signs in this?
We're not gonna, we're not looking for a different size sign on the back. He has updated his logo, we may take the existing one at some point and redo the logo at the same size, which I believe that was a, there's a permit. Would that be... That is flashability. That is...
That's a flash.
That would be there. That does not project, so again, you don't see that from 250. You can only see that from the parking lot when you're in there.
So do you plan on bringing piping out there and adding in some lights that shine on it?
They can think of that, I mean, I guess if we can put that in, it's a stipulation that they're allowed to, but we have no plans currently to do that. We're not looking to, there is, there is conduit that runs on the top edge, servicing all the signs. If they wanted to splice off from that, they could, that would be out of my realm.
Okay.
Has the building owner given permission to have a sign attached?
There have been talks, I'm not sure yet, but he has to sign off on something before I do anything as well, so, you know. I've left that between the tenant and his landlord. We do work for both of them, so I try to.
Try to make everybody happy, try to.
Answer me one question.
Sure.
As I look at that picture, there is nothing else that has a perpendicular sign attached to it?
In that picture, there is some in the other stuff.
I'll grant you that, but have we started a process of bringing in these kinds of signs for other businesses? And is that something, that's really a question that I would ask the rest of the board. That's something we wanna do, because if we give permission to put one here, why can't I put one next to it and a little bit farther?
I suppose that goes with all signs. But I would say there's many towns in the city and some districts now. The cities, you know what they call their renaissance, that's just where they're putting money. They're actually requesting these types of signs. They think that it's more traditional, or to the architecture that exists. They kind of, they looked at Chicago and New York and some of those and thought that there was a certain look about them that they liked. So some of, some of the areas, they're actually requesting that with those types.
Because there's language in our code book about a couple of things that I have a question about. And everybody should kind of be looking at this. Is that sign gonna obstruct fire escape?
I don't believe so, I believe that building almost, I don't, I'd have to look. I don't know if there's any space between that building and the next building over. I think they're, they're completely buttoned.
So were they apartments up there before, or has it always been coming?
It's a pretty, I think it was a dance studio at one point.
Yeah, we said we moved it last night.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big open floor plan up there, I mean, there's some...
So it's not obstructing the window?
It is...
The address from the window.
No, no, it is, so from the window to the corner of the buildings, probably, if I had to say, probably 3 foot, maybe a little bit more than that, bigger column. And we're, we're gonna be 4 inches depth running straight up that, so we don't have much obstruction. Actually, sir.
The question that, was the same question I had about the setting a precedent here. Because there really isn't a lot of these type of signs in the village, from what I could see. It wasn't, you know, when I went up and down Main Street, I don't think I saw any sign like that.
Can't remember what it is now, but Stratus Vesper used to have another one too, because they had such a confined entrance, they had no real visibility. So they could be turning an angle and, you know, a perpendicular projected sign for that. I think this is a, I understand what you're saying. I think this is a, a unique situation that this man has. Probably most square footage are double, equal to all the other square footage of the other businesses in that building, the least amount of exposure. He's got one very small entrance there, he's got no windows even let her from down there, anything like that to do any exposure. So this is the, really what we had to come up with to try to...
So his main entrance is gonna be off of Main Street now, instead of the back of the, the north side?
Not exclusively, his only entrance, but yes, he wants that to be his main entrance. He wants that, because that's where the foot traffic is. That's where he can get noticed, and he wants to start drawing people in the front of that building. So they've been working hard inside, and they've redone hallways, they're redoing doors, they're doing some, you know, they've done a lot of work to make it look, you know, welcoming.
Myself...
Go ahead.
Myself, I think it's a pretty good amount of second stories on a lot of programs.
I don't have any data associated with it, I have my gut reaction. Tattoo businesses have a habit of setting up the business, going out of business in a year or two.
I believe he's been there for six years, five or six years already.
As I said, I don't have data on it, but I've seen them set themselves up and then go out of business. What happens to the sign if they go out of business?
We go up and remove it. Fill the holes with a little, you just use a little mortar for the holes, paint match to the brick, and it's...
Yeah, but we granted a variance.
The variance exists.
Yep.
But I would say this, the next business who's there is gonna have the same difficult situation of being exposed. The variance would be for the same purpose you're using it for this business. So that the intent would still be correct for it.
Well, and if we tie up the variance tight enough, they can't change the sign spacing much.
Right.
The variance is specific to this situation. Now, the next guy could come in and he can quote precedent, but how many people have been coming looking for this type of sign? It's a situational process. And everything has to be done on its own merits.
So is our variance then to the, to 2 and 1/2 feet? Or however far out from the building, and do we tie it up that way?
Oh, you're talking about the projection off the building? That's not addressed. And it just says you're allowed a 2 feet.
Well, it is, it is in the sign. It is in the sign, because the sign can't be any more than 5 feet.
The sign can be 5, 5 foot by 2 foot.
It can be 5 feet long, so they could come out from the building 5 feet.
Where does it say that? Who's to say you can't project that sign a foot off the building? 'Cause the sign is the sign.
Well, 'cause then they call it perpendicular.
Ah, that is a hole.
You're talking about the space before you get to the sign? Or the overall projection of the sign?
The projection of the sign.
Yeah, yeah, if it is 5 foot wide, if they go by that, then they give a 5 wide by 2 high. By definition, it's minimum 5 feet from the building, yes.
Right, now, of course, you don't wanna hang the sign too far out, because you've got the cantilever effect, and you gotta have cable and support and all that stuff, so...
Yeah, we, the wind blow calculation on this is almost, it's almost negligible. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, or...
I appreciate your time.
Anybody on the board with any questions or comments? Do you take liability on this, or is he...
We, we supply our insurances to you guys on all, every town, every city. We submit our insurance and everything for our install, so we're, we're covered.
But that's for the, that stops after the install.
We're still responsible for that, that, that carries, we are the, as far as I know. On this, that's a good question.
Right, how?
I mean, we, I suspect we'd be liable, I guess, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I suspect everybody's liable when something happens. I, the sign guy, the owner, the, the building owner, but, you know, that's... Understood.
Yeah, how long does your liability last?
You're presenting a good question, I don't think we've ever actually, I've just assumed we were responsible all along, but I know, you know. I assume that's why we were giving our insurance. I guess I never thought that it was just for the duration of my install.
Do you give that insurance on an annual basis, that certificate?
We, every time we do it, we have to have an issue for that. We have to call our insurance company for every permit and have that signed, because it has to be, the tongue has to be written on it.
No, that's what I was getting at, was, is, does the insurance company give a new insurance certificate?
No, no.
On an annual basis?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, you'd probably standardize it.
Yeah, I guess that answers your question.
That'd be my guess.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that does answer your question, because if, if we were going out of business, we no longer are insured, you know, but, but I, I mean, I, this is the first time I've ever heard that question about 200 down these, I'm stunned.
Any question about the weight of that sign and putting it into that particular material?
We use, so we use one of two install methods. We either go in with 3-inch tapcons, which usually they expand into the brick, or we do leg and shield, where we put a lead anchor in, and then expands into a lead anchor. This typically should be fine, I don't see, I mean, our, all our calculations say it's gonna be fine with 3-inch tapcons, it's gonna have, it's got three posts, it's gonna have four tapcons in each, so there's two, there's 12 tapcons going down that.
Okay, so there's 3 or 4.
There's two post tops and one in the center, and each one has a square mounting bracket with four corners, so there's a lot of mounting going into that. Also, it's not cantilevered out very far, as we discussed. It's got a lot of room for wind passage to the main body, but it's only, only 14 inches wide. So air can travel in between it and the building and around it. It's all welded aluminum construction with ACM paneling, we call it, screwed to the face of that. And we're using acrylic ladders that are raised that will be back-screwed through that end, so they're not glued on or anything like that, they're actually mechanically affixed to that ACM.
Got it. Other questions or thoughts?
It's too bad Aaron isn't here tonight, but Joe, Aaron? Wouldn't you think, I would think that the buildings, ownership of the buildings, they've gotta have insurance if something falls off the facade of their building.
Yeah, they would have their own coverage.
So there's gotta be some coverage. Oh, okay.
So just some clarity for myself. There's no illumination of this sign, there's no intention at this point to put any illumination on this?
We'd like it written in that they can revisit, the, the sign itself will not be illuminated anyway, meaning we're not, there's nothing internally, or, or even LEDs affixed to it, the body of it. If he's gonna mount some lights, and I discussed it with him, if he wants to do that at a later date, we thought getting them down at the bottom of the sign and pointing them straight up, number one, you're not gonna have the lights in anybody's eyes if you shield them properly, and it's gonna cast a nice shadow off those ladders, that'll give it a dramatic look, kind of like uplighting on the side of the building. He can run those from existing conduit that is running in between the first and second floor, there's power in both the existing signs there. So, but again, I'm not gonna be, we'd like that written in that he can do that. I mean, if we can get that in the past, that he can do that at a later date, that would be great, so we don't have to come and revisit it if that is something that needs to go through zoning. But like I said, you know, and you can write in stipulation if you do approve it, that, you know, it must be shielded from line of sight to vehicles, or whatever we have to say, to make sure that it's not a distraction or causing problems.
I would think that's, we can't write that in. Could they come back with specifics?
Doesn't it say in the, in the wording that it can be lit externally and not internally? I mean, isn't...
It does say they can be illuminated externally, they cannot have internal illumination.
So if that's already in that writing, does that just follow this if approved? Or does it have to be written, or our...
But we don't know exactly what if and what he would want, what type of lighting, so I...
So do we wanna revisit that if that comes up? Okay, fair enough.
And then my other question that I had is the status of the owner of the building accepting this.
We, we have to, his signature gets on, we get both our client's and landlord's signature and everything. We don't enter a building space of any landlord without, without their signature and permission. Because we're altering their building, we're putting holes in their building, so we would be instantly held liable. They would expose us to a lawsuit right off the bat for...
Right, so for protection of all people, if we pass this, give the variance and that doesn't go through, we've given a variance for somebody to do this in the future without approval? A variance for the piece of property, stays with the property?
Yeah.
Even when it's sold?
But even if it didn't go through, the, the weight of that would be the same, right? I mean, it wouldn't matter if he put a sign up or not, if the variance exists. If its intent was to better this business, that purpose would serve the next business.
Yeah, the only thing is that if the owner, for some reason, is not happy with this type of sign going up.
Right.
And then he sells to someone else, that person could still have a sign put up there.
But that wouldn't hurt, right, if it was already, I mean, if your intent was to approve it based on helping that business that went up there, then that intent, that intent would still exist probably.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying on that. For some of us, it won't be enough.
Well, remember, they still have to get a permit, so you still have to get approval. Even, you know, just because it exists in zoning doesn't mean that they can just put up anything they want. They still have to go in front of the...
Well, they have to, oh, within that variance of that.
Yes, so there would still be people overseeing that it would be something tasteful or whatever, you know. So the tongue of the village is still the same.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right, right now, what I'd like to do is I'd like to open up the floor and see if there are any questions in the general public, or comments for, or against this, or whatever they are. Just tell us who you are and make the comments. Or, in our case, no one's coming up. All right, let me close that portion. Any comments, questions, or open, open questions need to be made by the members of the board. Was there anybody wrote anything in, from all the people that were informed of this?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, let me, let me move this on. Installation of a sign is an unlisted action under S E C R.
Sorry, thank you.
That's all right, I was able to get it. So we have to answer the questions in part 2 of the short form assessment submitted by the applicant in order to decide under part 3 whether the installation of the app, of the, of the sign will or won't have any significant environmental impact associated with it. Now, I have those... Now, I have those blind questions, or we actually, I have the, and as do all of you, if you get down to page, at the end, it's page 3 or 4. I'm going to go through these real quickly here and see if you, what the, all the questions say no right now, but I want to go through them and make sure that we have the opportunity. All right, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use or plan of the zoning regulations?
No.
I don't see that.
No.
Anyone see that?
Nope.
No one did, all right. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? And what this is really going at is when you start into acres, you put in 400 units of an apartment, it's really driving at those. This says no, I would agree that no one here says no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
Can't see that. It's an associate business.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishments of the critical environmental area? And it doesn't do that here. All right, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for the mass transit, biking, or walkway area?
No.
What it says is no. All right, will the proposed action cause an intense, an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? All right, public or private water waste, wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the characteristic or quality of important historic archaeological or architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
I don't think so. All right, will the proposed action result in adverse change to the natural resources? For example, the wetlands, the water bodies, the groundwater, the air quality, flora or fauna? I'm just reading what's there, stop laughing at me. All right, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? I can't see that off the side of the building. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Negative.
All right, so we have negative on all those. So we have then, the third thing that we have to do is we have to go down through, and let me pull that out here. All right. In order to decide, under part 3, whether installation of the sign will or won't have significant adverse environmental impact. So as we go through these, check this box if you have determined, based on the information and analysis above of any supporting documentation, that the proposed action may result in one or more potentially large or significant adverse impacts and an environmental impact assessment is required. So in other words, do we have to do a formal environmental assessment reform? And the second part of that one is, check this box if you have determined, based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact.
That's the one.
I think that is the one, and then we sign off on that. So we've done both part 2 and part 3. Now what I, and we've answered those questions. So now what we need is a formal, we've opened and closed the comments to the public. We've had our own comments, and we've had a pretty intense discussion on this one. Um, and, and I could tell you, I had some questions about it as we come in, and thank you all for what you did, because I think we got most of those answered. So what we have right now is, do we grant a motion? Or do we have on the table a motion to grant approval for the sign in these sizes that doesn't have any, and go ahead. All right. Motion for the type 2 action.
Okay, go through the process.
We do have to go through that process. So we have to have a motion for the type 2 or unlisted action for seeker. Do we have a motion on the table for that?
I will make that motion for type 2 unlisted action regarding the seeker.
Seconded?
It's mine.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
It's not type 2, though.
Yeah, I know it's not a type 2.
The motion has to be...
It's an unlisted.
Unlisted.
We're going to get... Does everyone agree that it's an unlisted action, not type 2?
Yes.
Yes. Posed?
Too many words.
None, very good. All right, so we have 2 motions to grant there, and I'm going to let it go. Go for it, we...
Want to do this? Anybody want to do it?
I'll do it.
I'll do it more. All right, so I would like to make a motion for installation of a second sign on, but this one on the Main Street face of the building at 5 West Main Street.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve a second sign.
A second?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None. I think you have a second one.
Yes, and this one is debatable because of the size. We, 10, 9.8 versus 10, but I will make the motion nevertheless for an area variance for the size of the sign and the type of the sign being a projection sign off the front face of the building.
So we have a motion to grant a 2.5 by 7 foot sign that will be consistent with all other regulations? We have a second on that one? That's over and above the 2 by 5.
I will make the motion.
We've got a seconded motion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. The third thing I'm not going to put in there is, because it already says it, and, and I was thinking of putting this in, was that you can't have backlit illumination on it. But the code wouldn't require it, wouldn't allow it. You can light it with, whatever you want to put on it, I suspect. There's those little tent ones.
I'll allow them to revisit that if you guys have a go.
There you go. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, do I still, I can't remember, really, should I still go to planning for this?
No.
This is it?
This is the planning board.
This is everything, this is zoning planning, you guys are creative. All right.
We're very efficient.
You're very efficient. Thank you, I'm having holidays, everybody.
Thank you, and you too.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Okay, um...
Next meeting.
Next meeting. I do not know if there's anything, but I suspect there always is.
Well, what's that, a date?
Well, let's review the date. The date should be, um, the 12th? Is that what, Tuesday, December? Second Tuesday?
13th.
Close. 19th.
19th.
I knew that, I was just testing you guys. You guys did have it, you have to, 19. All right, so if we have a meeting, um, Aaron will get to us on the 19th.
Tuesdays, Tuesdays.
And right now, I don't know whether there is anything in our board, but they seem to think there might be. Anything for you also, as a, as a group here? Um, let's, let's wish Joe so much good luck at one more meeting that we get to see her, because she is retiring at the end of the year. And I'd like to let her know how great it's been working with her, and I hope you love the retirement and the grandchildren.
The babysitter. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
All right, we'll see you back in about 4 months. Other comments or thoughts?
That's right, make the motion.
I motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Seconded in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. We adjourn, thank you.
Good job, you guys.
Thank you.